Call the emergency school committee meeting to order it being Saturday, October 9, 2021, it being past nine o'clock. Before we, well, let's establish a call first. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah.
Mr. D'Agostino?
Here.
Mr. Minicello?
Here.
Mrs. Mendez?
Here.
Ms. Azak?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
The chair is here as well. Before we get into the meeting, I do have to read the following into the record that was prepared by our attorney, Peter Mello. "The meeting of the Brockton School Committee convened on October 9, 2021 has been called with the goal of reviewing the events of Friday, yesterday, October 8, 2021, and the emergency response that followed. Due to an ongoing criminal investigation and the risk of providing privileged information that could undermine the work of law enforcement, there will be no public comment period today. Additionally, certain speakers today have prepared written statements which we read into the record. The speakers will not take questions at the conclusion of their statements as the information they are allowed to publicly disclose at this time is already reflected in their statements. Information that is intentionally absent from their statements includes any personal identifying information about the student or witnesses, as well as any discussion of motive of or motive or the student's emotional state when the incident occurred. Any discussion of such information would be detrimental to the work of investigators and therefore will not be permitted at this time. The majority of this meeting will be devoted to reviewing our safety protocols and devising a plan for enhancing safety measures to be enacted on the morning of Tuesday, October 12, 2021. Again, due to the ongoing nature of the investigation, I, as chair, reserve the right to disrupt any comment or line of questioning that could undermine the work of the law enforcement." And I thank you. Just piece of information again, as you remember, we have called six o'clock next Tuesday, subcommittee, which will be public safety at that time, because I know we have some teachers here. At that time, we will have hearing of the visitors. This is not a public hearing, this is a public meeting, but next Tuesday, we will entertain that. I do want to reflect that Chief Manny Gomes is here. Thank you for being here today, Brockton Police Chief, Dr. Cliff Murray, Principal of Brockton High School. Jess Hodges, I want to thank Jess for all her work yesterday, all of her work. And of course, I do want to especially thank Superintendent Mike Thomas and Deputy Superintendent Dr. Suzakowitz, who really, really showed their professionalism yesterday. So we will, we will be talking, we'll be hearing from Superintendent Thomas, Dr. Murray, Police Chief Gomes, and then we can all discuss our own endeavors. I do just want to reflect again what the statement said. We're talking about a minor that was involved in an active investigation, and there will be due process hearing. So that shouldn't be discussed at this time. It should just be process enhancements and protocols. So I will open it up with Superintendent Thomas. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. So yesterday morning, I don't know if I, is this on? I can't hear myself. All right. Um, my glasses. So just to fill you in on the timeline, at eight, nine fifty-seven, Dr. Murray was called to the House office, because he was informed there was a student was in the office and that student could have a gun in his bag. At ten oh five, the student that was in the office did indeed have a gun in his bag. Cliff actually called me right around ten oh one to let me know he was heading to the House office of the situation. At ten oh five, he informed me the student was, who was in the House office, indeed had a gun in his bag, and Officer Vaughn had the weapon without incident. And ten fourteen, I was on the phone with Chief Gomes. We talked a few minutes about, you know, about the gun dogs. He decided, we decided, he decided to call in the gun dogs and to report to BHS to do a sweep. Ten eighteen, I called Cliff back. He was still in the House office. I said, put the school in a stay in place. The gun dogs are on their way to be, to do a sweep. I arrived at BHS at ten forty-five and to manage the situation with Cliff and Chief Gomes, and the mayor was with us as well. The sweep was completed at eleven thirty-five. At that time, around eleven forty, all the buses were in place, so we called for the early dismissal at twelve. So that's the timeline. I want to thank Dr. Zakowitz stayed back at Central, so we could, you know, basically we called Central Command to make sure we're informing, getting calls out to parents. We also send emails to all the other principals, so they know what's going on. So if anybody's calling those schools, because that does happen, that the principals and their assistant principals and administrative assistants know exactly what's going on at Brockton High, so there's no confusion that it's happening at another school. The stay in place, so just quickly about how we're trained. A lockdown is called when there's an active threat in the building. That means there would be somebody going around to do harm, and the situation's not under control. A stay in place is called when the situation's under control and we need to investigate and then further bring in the police to do their investigation. So, and I can bring Cliff up to go over.
Yeah, thank you very much. I also just want to reflect that Vice Chairman Mark D'Agostino and Joyce Azak, school committee woman, were here yesterday at that time as well. And I also just want to make it clear to everybody that there were no injuries. It was resolved in a peaceful manner. It was a serious threat, but as we stated during the press conference yesterday, we do want to applaud the students that spoke up. We say, always say, we've always said this, right? If you see something, say something. So, you know, the staff, the students that spoke up, but then more importantly, the stay in place, and Mike and I share this, it was done exceptionally well. The teachers, the students, everybody stayed calm. It would have been mayhem if it wasn't that way. So I do, I do just want to state that everything that had been prepared, and you'll hear from Chief Gomes and Dr. Murray, but everything that had been prepared, worst case scenario, for the best case scenario, came to fruition yesterday. So, Dr. Murray.
Good morning. So I really can't say enough about our staff and the students. Students did the right thing. Staff responded beautifully. We did take a few minutes to ascertain what we felt the situation was once we were satisfied that we didn't have any additional issues or this was not something that involved other individuals. We were very comfortable with the actions that we had taken with the assistance of school police. I informed Mr. Thomas, you know, immediately. One of the things that we did discuss in our debrief was the timing. Unfortunately, this all occurred right before passing, and the bell did ring for the following period. But again, we're, we did not feel there was any kind of significant concern once we had resolved this incident. We started the process of allowing students to change classes. I knew that the buses would be coming around noon time, thought that it was a wise idea to let them move one last time. Superintendent and Chief Gomes directed us to do a stay in place, that the gun dogs and other officers were arriving. I did send an email to my staff, which is kind of a breach of protocol before the stay in place, simply because I was concerned with the helicopters, the large contingent of police officers, the dogs. We had additional police officers in the building, and I did not want that to create any kind of additional panic. There was some confusion, obviously, at the bell, but the staff responded beautifully, as did the students. We had a lot of cooperation from parents, and I had an opportunity to walk around the building, as did the deans and assistant deans. We actually had a lot of good instruction going on still, as is the case with a stay in place. Our expectation is the students will continue to do their schoolwork. I can't be more thankful for Chief Gomes and his staff after what they all had gone through the evening before. They were all very, very positive, very supportive, and again, our school police who were right there when we needed them. So it was, you know, let's say, you can train all you want, but in the heat of the moment, it is not always the way you train, but I thought the staff especially did a great job getting the kids into a safe location. And again, with the shooting in Texas, the events of the evening before, I felt it was important to try and convey that everything was under control, but that as an abundance of caution, as the superintendent put it, we were going to use the additional assets of the Brockton Police and the gun dogs.
Dr. Murray, I also want to just put into the record how I witnessed you getting on the, on the intercom, steady and calm, and giving information to the students and staff. I witnessed that several times, so that was great. I also want to just let everybody know that when we were sweeping, when Chief Gomes was sweeping, every inch of this building was going to be swept, right? From the gym all the way to here, the fine arts, every nook and cranny. And Dr. Murray said, let's also sweep Maciano Stadium. There's a football game there tomorrow, being today. So that was really great insight, and that was done as well. So thank you for that, Dr. Murray.
Again, it was a team effort. We have a great set of administrators, and the teachers were fantastic. You couldn't ask for a more professional, competent group of people. You know, I'm sure they had a lot of questions, but they, they did what we were asked, were asking them to do, and again, I think it really speaks very highly of our teaching staff and our students.
Thank you very much, Doctor.
And I just want to add that I've done this for several years when I was Director of Operations and then Deputy Superintendent. I've been to, I don't know, me, Lieutenant Mills at the time, Lieutenant Fadaro, Nancy Lieberg, we've been, I've been to so many of these trainings. We've seen, we've seen video surveillance of, you know, after action reports, and that's how we have to inform, you know, how was our timeline? Can we do things better? How did we dismiss the students? The placement of the buses, the vans, that we do, the best we could do to dismiss the students who were walkers, who were going over to Stop &amp; Shop to meet their parents? How do we dismiss the students with disabilities? So, you know, all those things are reviewed, but in all those trainings I've been to, they will show videos of the insider, you know, surveillance camera footage, and these are after of, you know, schools that where students and staff don't do and follow the protocols of a stay in place or a lockdown. And if two or three classes start to leave, and then all others see, and then you see the hallways, and you see the panic, and people just going everywhere, and with a building of, you know, there's about 4,500 here every day. So for everyone to do what they were supposed to do, if, again, if even one or two classes leave when they're not supposed to, it would set off a domino effect. Again, that hasn't happened here, which was great. So again, I commend the amazing job of the staff, because it's nerve wracking. I mean, no one wants a gun in the school. I mean, I went to school here, I worked here for 10 years. We do not obviously want guns in the schools, so it's not a good situation at all. But, you know, the way, you know, the staff reacted and the students reacted to stay calm, you know, really helped calm the situation down.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you, Doctor. Chief Gomes, good morning, Manny. Thank you for being here.
Good morning.
Want to again just thank you and your team and school police as well for yesterday, and of course, the night previous as well. So thank you for being here today, Chief.
Thank you. Good morning. I'd just like to highlight the actions of the Brockton Police Department yesterday. I was notified by the superintendent of an incident here mid-morning. We quickly moved in the PD. We got all available assets, that means all personnel and equipment. We mobilized everyone out of the station. We pulled school resource officers from other schools and officers that were on other assignments outside of the station. We mobilized, we came here. I also activated upon what was reported to me. I believe that the building needed to be swept, and the best use for that is to use specially-trained canines in the search of firearms. We activated a thing that we have with the canines. Brockton Police has five dogs, and we also belong to a region of mutual aid dogs. So we activated all dogs that could respond to the Brockton High School at that time. While we were doing that, we set up a perimeter, and we stopped all non-essential traffic inbound into the, into the grounds. We set up a parent slash pickup area across the street and the old Stop &amp; Shop parking lot. Felt that that'd be the best location to do it. Everyone was in place. I came on scene, the, all the dogs arrived. The building was, was in lockdown, was also very orderly. I made the decision to send in some canines, the non-gun dogs, to do a protective sweep before the children moved, make sure that there was nothing in the halls or in the bathrooms or anything that we didn't know. And once that sweep was done, it was a release, and then after that, the gun dogs were brought in and searched the entire building. There were several dogs here that specialized in that, and those dogs searched this building from end to end, and then, as was mentioned, then we went over and did the stadium as well. No other items were found, and at that time, once we concluded our operation, the Brockton Police Department secured. But I also want to take this, this opportunity to commend Superintendent and his entire staff. When I arrived here, I found it orderly. It was clear to me that policies, procedures, and training had kicked in, and that is a big plus for us, that we didn't have a panic situation. And I want to commend them, I want to commend the, the school police. I thought everyone, you know, fell back on their training, and they're very professional. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief Gomes. Again, I want to thank Superintendent Dr. Murray and Chief Gomes. At this time, we'll, we'll open it up to have conversation relative to the school committee, and I'll start with the Vice Chairman.
Thank you. Excuse me. Yeah, I just again want to say, you know, I got here about the same time as the superintendent yesterday, and everything was happening very orderly. I appreciate the staff in the building, the parents, the students, you know, everybody, the response at every level was exactly as we, as the district is always trained for and exactly as it should have been. There was calm in the building, which is so important in these types of situations. You know, I want to thank the chief and the, and Brockton Police and school police. They did a great job. They, they, you know, it was, I mean, literally, I have to say, everything went seamless yesterday. And obviously, it's a, you know, situation we, nobody wants to have happen, but thankfully, we've got the training in place and, you know, we, we knew what to do, and everybody did what, what they've been trained to do. So I just want to thank everybody on behalf of the school committee yesterday that was involved in the response, you know, for, for everything they did to address the situation. It was, you know, again, handled very professionally at all, at all levels, and especially the students. I mean, they, you know, were calm, they stayed in their classes, and the teachers kept them calm, and I just, I mean, again, everybody did, did very well, and so I appreciate that.
Thank you. I also just thank you very much for appearing on site yesterday with us. That meant a lot, and Joyce as well, and we'll get to Joyce in one second. We say staff, of course, we're talking about the teachers, right? But we're also talking about the custodians.
Yes.
The people that work in the lunchrooms. I mean, the crossing, because I witnessed everybody. Everybody was working as a team for the safety of the kids, and it was, it was really great to see. So thank you again, Mark. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to Joyce now before we open up to other members. Joyce, thank you for being here today and yesterday as well.
Thank you. So what I witnessed yesterday is what we've been training for and seeing it firsthand. It was impressive. It was calm. We did what we needed to do. Our superintendent was keeping everybody updated. And Jess Hodges, she, whatever we asked for, our superintendent, get it on social media. If parents were not getting their Connect Ed calls because they're at work or they can't answer the phone, we got it on social media. The word got out where the children needed, where our students needed to go. We have a plan in place. You know, we're very lucky. We, you know, we got through yesterday, and this is why we're here today. Safety is our priority, and if it wasn't for our superintendent, our mayor, Chief Gomes, and BPS teachers, staff, and our police officers, I mean, when I showed on, showed up on site, they were in groups, and they were doing what they needed to do to get, you know, keep us safe. So I just, I'll keep it brief, because I'm sure there's others that want to speak, but again, this is part of the training. We've actually done the training, the Alice training, but this is part of the training that we've always prepared for, you know, the few years I've been on the school committee. So seeing it firsthand was very calm, and that's not what I expected. I figured everything would be a frenzy, but it was very calm. So thank you Superintendent Thomas, Mayor Sullivan, and Chief Gomes for getting our students safely out of the building and making sure everything was secure.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Azak. I'm gonna go in no particular, Mr. Minicello, please.
I'd like to also thank law enforcement and the superintendent and his staff for including us.
I'm sure that's on, Tom.
Yeah, it's on.
It is?
Yeah. It's not too loud today.
How important would you say it is that the Brockton School Police are struck, the structure, command structure is through the police department rather than the school department?
We had these discussions probably, I want to say, it was actually before Mayor Carpenter, late Mayor Carpenter took. When I came downtown in 2010 as Director of Operations, that's when, I'm sorry, it was no, it was 2007, and Linda Belzotti was still the mayor, and we had discussions when they sent up Lieutenant Mills when there was a shooting on the steps of Brockton High, and Mr. Minicello, you were, you were involved in that as well. And the discussion then was, because at the time, the person before me, who was the Director of Operations, was actually the person in charge of school police. So, and I think it was you, Mr. Minicello, that said, this is not a good setup to have a civilian. And luckily, that was you worked with the school committee at the time, and Mayor Belzotti and the city council to, to put a lieutenant in charge. So the, the school committee agreed to pay the lieutenant salary. The city council had to change the ordinance to add to a 12 to 13 lieutenants. I might be off on my numbers.
Oh, you're right. We did that.
I tried to, my memory's still pretty good. And then Chief Gomes sent over, I think it was the time, it might have been Chief Connolly, and he sent over Lieutenant Mills, and he was our first lieutenant, and, but at that time, to your point, there were discussions of having a merger. You are allowed by law to have a one-time merger, because school police are employees, they are not civil service employees, but there is allowed to do a one-time merger if it's agreed by the school committee and the city council to have them under, fully under the Brockton Police with a, a school division. So it's a good point, Mr. Minicello, and I think it's discussions that we have to have going forward. It died. You know, going forward, a lot of other things happened, and it was never, never talked about again after Linda Belzotti left office, so, but I agree with you, because again, you were, you were the one that was here, and you are the one that really worked hard to bring a lieutenant, and rightfully so, because I was the person who took the operations job, and I did not want to be in charge of, you know, sworn in offices, because I don't, again, I'm not a, I'm not a lieutenant, I'm not a captain, my background isn't in criminal justice.
And how would you say the training has been for the Brockton School Police since the police department has taken over the command structure?
Absolutely. Yep, excellent. They get all the training through the police department. They have to follow all the required training through the police department. So again, that's been, that's been a huge, a huge difference. Again, and I've been involved in it deeply for 10 years.
And since we've had the Brockton Police command structure in place, would you say that our training has improved or our training over the years is better than it was before, having the Brockton Police involved?
Two hundred percent. And not only that, Mr. Minicello, is, it was also Lieutenant Mills and the Brockton Police, you know, they're, you know, they're the ones who really were, you know, the driving force between, you know, how we were trained in lockdowns and stay in place, now it's Alice. You know, those things have all been, you know, was the reason why all those were put in place is because the structure was changed.
What would you say that parents can expect for safety protocols going forward for Tuesday for the students?
Well, there'll be extra offices on site, several extra offices on site. You know, they'll be at the entrances. We will have the available, we have handheld metal detectors will be available, and, you know, those will all be, obviously, Dr. Murray and his staff usually at the entrances. We will obviously limit the entrances where students come in, where they check in, but that's something we really, you know, that's, we'll be ready for it. I'll be talking to Chief Gomes later more about it, Officer Vaughn, Dr. Murray, so obviously something we'll be talking about all weekend, but we will definitely have extra offices. They will remain here all day, and again, we'll have the wands at the entrances as well.
So should parents and students be comfortable coming to school on Tuesday, I guess, with what's going to be?
I would be. I mean, I, I'll be here pretty much all morning as well, and so, you know, I don't, I can't get into the background of the student, because obviously, there's a hearing that to take place, but, you know, let's just say that it's a very isolated incident, and, and there would, this would not be, I don't want to say much more, because I, you know, that's a very isolated incident.
Again, I just wanted to say thank you to law enforcement, our chief of police, who we're fortunate to have, our mayor and the school department, who acted professionally and swiftly and made sure that we, as a school committee, were informed. So that was great. So thank you all. Appreciate it.
Yeah, it's, it's, when you, you know, you get the call from Cliff, and then, you know, it's, you know, then everything has to kick in. I mean, you have to go by what you've been trained to do, and things change, and then you, you know, as one person, I mean, I had, you know, two phones a-going, you know, so thank God for, you know, Dr. Zakowitz, who was, stayed back, and she's working directly with Jess, you know, because who needs to get the message? Then Mark, I was on the phone with Mark, who then, okay, Mark, you're gonna get, you're gonna update all the, you know, the school committee. So when you're in the middle of making all these decisions, then, you know, before I left Central, my, I wanted to get a call out to parents right away. So then you have to record that call, so you gotta make sure you do that calm, and this all has to be done with calm, and, you know, you have to be calm in these situations. So you gotta get the call out to parents, which, you know, in previous years, we didn't do that before. You know, we waited to make that call to parents, and that's not good, so I had to get that call out before I left Central. And again, I got to the high school where I met Mr. D'Agostino. We had a park over at the Shaw Center, because you couldn't get onto campus and walk over, so I wanted to make sure that call went out, so parents knew we were in a stay in place. And I gotta commend the parents, because, and, and people, like, I did not follow protocol when it comes to the exact training as far as the early release, because if you listen to a lot of places that do this, they would not do an early release. Once the, the threat is, is pretty much secured, they would expect you to finish the school day. However, I'm a parent of three girls, and I know what I want, I would want my girls home, even though the threat, there was no active threat, and the threat was settled, I thought it was very important to allow, because that just sends up, you know, if you, if you make the students stay in school, make the parents wait for them to be dismissed, and again, that's what training tells us, is to just go finish with your regular school day. I didn't feel that was a smart thing to do. I felt it was important, because I felt it could have set up a safety issue, because you have parents who obviously get very upset, rightfully so, and I didn't want them, you know, really getting into conflict with law enforcement at who, who blocked the entrances and say, you know, I need to get in and get my, my child. That's not a good situation, so I felt it was very important to do the early release, which was two hours early. I just did not think it was a smart thing to do to, to make students stay in school, you know, for another two hours, make parents wait two hours. Same with, you know, same with our staff. You know, it's, it's very unnerving, and then, you know, they have to try to go through with their regular school day and teach. I just thought the best thing I had to do at, you know, at that time was to do the early release, but that's not what the training tells us. So sometimes you, I disagree with that part of the training, so I went in the opposite direction.
Thank you very much, and Mark, thank you for notifying us all. I missed Mark's call, but he said, call me urgently. So when he says, call me urgently, you know, you need to call urgently. So thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Thomas. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Minicello. So again, I just want to make it clear, I said this during the press conference, we're very fortunate to have each and every one of you, all seven elected school committee members. Two were there yesterday, but the, the other five would have been, but work comes in, you know, you weren't around, but you're here today on a Saturday morning, because we understand how important, how dire this situation is. I also will make a plug right now, whoever gets elected, whoever gets reelected when the new legislative session starts in January, both city council and school committee should really work to incorporate what Tom was just talking about, making the school police part of the Brockton PD. State delegation would need to assist on that endeavor as well, but it truly is the right thing. And I remember when I was a student here in the 80s, Mr. Gentile was the police chief, and people used to say, you know, talking bad about Brockton, I can't believe you about Brockton, "I can't believe you have your own police force up there. You know, what is this martial law?" Well, yesterday was an example of how important it was, because it was split second, and it could have went backwards real quickly. So, thank you, Tom. Any other school committee members at this time? Judy, please.
Yes, I just wanted to speak to the parents. I know that this is the scariest situation that a parent can go through. And I just want the parents, I want to reassure the parents that what you see here, okay, and former mayors, former superintendents, former principals of this school and this system are all working together. This police Alice training, which is alert lockdown, inform, and I'm not sure of the C and the E, but they have to do with it too, is, I know Dr. Murray and Chief Gomes know, but this has been worked on for, I think, at least five years, the Alice training and the alert and lockdowns. And all teachers have gone through this training, kids, staff. What you see here is people working together for the safety of our children, which is our top concern. These teachers here and staff are amazing. I only hear good things when I'm out there. We have to trust that our police, our superintendent, our mayor, while the lockdown is in place, or the stay in place is in place, that they're protecting our kids. And I know they are. And I'm reassured, I've seen their work over the years, and it just amazes me. But everybody has to work together. And everybody has to, if you see something, if you hear something, let the school commit, that's why we're here. Okay, I don't want to see it on Facebook. I want to see you emailing me, or other members, and calling me, or call the mayor's office, or superintendent's office. We're all here. All the teachers are here to help, and staff. And I just wanted to give everybody a hand for working together. And it's a really great job that they do. And it's because of we, the importance of the safety of your children. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Judy. Mr. Sullivan, please.
Yes, Chief Gomes, I was wondering, was there any other incidents, like a slip and fall, when the kids were trying to get out quick? Was there any other incidents, like a slip and fall, with the kids trying to get out quickly and go over the stop and shop?
No, there was, actually, there was no, there's no one getting out quickly. It was actually, it was a planned, regular dismissal. So, no one was running out of the building. No one was, you know, running, it was a planned dismissal that happened at noon time. The bell rang, I don't know if the bell rang, Dr. Murray announced the dismissal, and students, I was there the whole time. I stood outside. Students walked out like they would walk out on a normal day. And the students that needed to meet their parents, thanks to Chief Gomes, there were plenty of officers over on that side, going out by the softball fields, to make sure students walked. Obviously, Belmont Street's busy, to make sure the students that were getting rides. But I was talking, I don't know, I think I talked to about 20 kids on the way out, just, you know, they're asking who I was. And it was a normal, any regular Brockton High dismissal. There was nobody running, and...
Chief Gomes, the other thing I wanted to ask was the metal detectors. What do you think of the wands? I've seen them at the airport. They, you warn somebody up and down, or you can walk through a metal detector?
Manny, if you could just come to the podium, because it's being taped. Thank you.
Are the wands just as good as the metal detector?
Yes, they would be. There would be an incidence like that. That would be something for this board to take up, you know, for any future policies to put into action, if you, you know, if you deem so. And we'll set up the training.
No trouble with the kids crossing Belmont Street?
Not at all. To echo what the superintendent said, it was very orderly, very calm. We had plenty of staff here. And it went as well as you could plan for.
I just wanted to congratulate you, Chief Gomes, the mayor, the superintendent, Mark DiAgostino, everybody did a fabulous job. And it could have went south real quick, but it didn't. You know, it was a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Then, I just want to remind everybody that, you know, at Brockton High School, there are over, I believe, 250 cameras that have been upgraded over the years. We're ready to do another upgrade. The server is at its capacity. Those cameras are connected directly to the Brockton Police. So, if there ever was an active shoot situation at the high school, any police officer pulling up in there, you know, or even back at the station, pulling up with their laptop, could pull up the cameras. They're connected to the city system. That's still in place. We also, I don't know if people remember this from pre-COVID, we have an interior ShotSpot system here at the high school. So, if there's ever, we put that in, I don't know how many years, it was pre, right before, I think I first became superintendent. So, that's in place throughout the building. Not that we ever want to hear, you know, ever want to have to use it, or it ever goes off, God forbid, but that is in place, because I'm sure some people have forgotten that. That's throughout the entire building. And, you know, obviously, that, unfortunately, if there was ever a shooting, you know, that would pick that up quickly, so you would identify the exact location in the building. So, that ShotSpot system is in here. Actually, we were given that system free from a company out of, I think it was out of Nevada, as the test for, you know, schools across the country. And that system is still in place, and it's tied directly into the police department as well. So, I just want to, and now that we're gonna be upgrading our server, which is very expensive, to be able to add more cameras, because servers can only take up to so many cameras, because again, these are citywide cameras. And, you know, we'll be upgrading that system. I think the, the bill has already been paid. We're just waiting for the new server to come in, which obviously is delayed because of the chips, the microchips are not, you know, everything's delayed with microchips, I guess. That's, that will be able to add, I think we're ready, I want, we ought to add, I think, another 50 cameras here at the high school, inside and out. But to the already, I think, over 200 that we have.
Yeah, that's correct.
Just a point of interest on that ShotSpot system. The salesman was a Brockton High graduate.
Yeah, Brockton High graduate. Yeah, it's...
That's why he donated it to us.
That's why he donated it. What's, I can't think of it. Oh, Cogliano, Richard Cogliano, Brockton High graduate.
I was just going to show you what Brocktonians do for Brocktonians. That was great.
Yep. He was, he's the East Coast salesman for this company. They contacted him, and they knew of Brockton High because of its size, and that's why he was able to get us the system. And it was a test system, so we didn't have to pay for it.
Any other school committee members at this time?
If I can just... Yep. So, Mr. Sullivan, I was actually there at the administration as students were exiting. And honestly, if you didn't know what we went through that morning, you'd never know. I mean, they were leaving calmly. And actually, there was one teacher, and I apologize, I think her last name was Thompson. And she was wonderful, absolutely wonderful, that I actually went over to her and said to her, "Thank you. This is what BPS is all about." She was telling the students, "Have a wonderful weekend, stay safe, very calm with them. This is why..." You know, I love, I love BPS. And yesterday showed it, showed how everybody came together. So, like I said, you'd never know what we went through, from what I witnessed. And I was there for a good, maybe 20 minutes at the administration entrance area, as they were leaving. So, but it was calm.
Thank you. I'm just gonna give some information as well, if I could. So, Chief Gomes and I were actually together at the Brockton Police Department, welcoming back the hero officer that had been shot the night before. He'd been discharged from BMC in the morning. He came to the police department. We welcomed him back as a hero. And then we found out, and from the wonderful feeling of this police officer, thank God he's alive, right, and the camaraderie, and the friendship, and the family, as Manny said, police tactics kicked in, because we were notified instantaneously. So, the joy of seeing this hero back changed quickly, and they put their game face on, and they flew up here to Brockton High. So, that speaks volumes of the men and women that serve and protect every single day in the city of Brockton. And I wanted that to be reflected, because a lot of people wouldn't know that. I also just want to piggyback from the previous conversation we had the other night, when the parents came here, rightfully so. Listen, my brother lives in Newtown. We know what happened in Newtown. You know, he's got three kids, and he's got a wife. So, we know what happens. So, we have to plan for the worst, right? So, when we hear about incidents in bathrooms, and that TikTok BS that's going, we, as elected officials, as parents, we have a duty. We have a duty. So, Tuesday at 6:00, that duty will continue. We're gonna think outside the box. What tools do we need? What additional resources do we need? Cameras are key, changing ordinances to the city council, and whatever we need to do, according to what Mr. Sullivan, the chief, said about authorizing purchase of more tools. We'll do that. But I wanted the superintendent to give an update. All of us know the update relative to the bathrooms, what we've done since that conversation. So, superintendent, if you don't, it's a little bit off topic, but if you could share it, that'd be important.
So, I met with, after, on Wednesday morning, I met with the Brockton High School administration, just, you know, to go over some of the issues that were brought up by people that spoke. And again, it's appreciated. So, we came up with the idea that, you know, now that we have bus drivers who are, you know, used to dealing with kids, who are our employees, Corey'd fingerprinted. So, we have 20 of them reporting every day after their run. They finish at about nine, they're back in the, over here at the fairgrounds at about 9:30. They report to the main office. And actually, yesterday was their first day to report. So, you know, they'll be, they'll be in Brockton High shirts. They'll have, we shipped up, I think, 25 new walkie-talkies that we have, because we always have extra. And they will be outside of every bathroom, to obviously monitor them, you know, call floor teachers, call administration when there's any issues, especially if there's too many students going into the bathrooms. We also had facilities put on and extra six custodians. Those are night custodians. They'll come in during the day between 10:00 and 2:00, to also help not only with monitoring the bathroom, but also getting them or offering to clean them. So, there's this extra, so there's 26 extra people, and they'll all be assigned to bathrooms.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. Any other comments, or, Mr. Vice Chairman, please?
Just a quick follow-up, and I should have covered it earlier, but Mr. Sullivan's question made me think of it. So, I wanted to also commend everybody who was, when I first got the call from Mike, he put me on speaker, and, you know, he pulled everybody who needed to be in his office in to go through, "Okay, this is what we need to do." And it was very calm, thoughtful, "All right, we're doing a dismissal." Yep, because none of us would be right as parents until we laid eyes on our child, right? And we all got that, "Okay, what about the walkers? We gotta make sure that," you know, and parents picking them up. And from there, every, everything, we, it was very thoughtful, very methodical. I think we thought of everything, and just, you know, went to work. And again, I can't thank the Brockton Police and school police enough for the response they provided. And, you know, I mean, but really, everybody. It was very orderly, and, but, and it was just, but everything was thought of, and everything was covered. And, you know, so again, it's just good to see what, to Mrs. Sullivan's point, that's what happens when you've trained, and then the team works together, and the team comes together, you know. And so, that is all.
I think the last thing I just wanted to share is that Chief Gomes had said, out of abundance of caution, once the situation's controlled peacefully, right, with no conflict, no injury, a police chief does not have to do a sweep. Situation had been under control. But Manny had asked Mike and I, and Sue, and Cliff, if we agreed with this decision, and universally and collectively, would absolutely, absolutely do it. So, some people might say that was overkill. No, it was the right thing to do, and we all stand by that. And safety is paramount. I also want to thank the teachers that are here today. I want to thank parents that are here today. This is a conversation that needs to be continued. We need to continue to work together. The number one thing, and we said this the other day, right, when you drop your child off, you want your child to come home safe. You want the teachers that are going to work every day, that are dedicated, educated, to be safe. And we're gonna continue that at BPS. As long as I chair it, as long as all of you are working with us and with the superintendent, we'll get it done. And I also just want to give a shout-out to Dr. Zakowitz, because I called Mike's cell phone, and Dr. Zak picked it up. And I might have had some colorful language, and I do apologize at that time, Dr. Zak. I don't always handle stress the best. But I also want to say what's amazing, if you don't laugh, you cry, right? So, Mike was able to talk to two different people on two different phones at the same time. I don't know how he did it, but he did it. He's a good multitasker. But on a serious, on a serious note, there is no price tag on safety. So, as long as our mayor, the city budget, and Mike, and the school budget, and all of you, we're gonna put money in and resources in. We need to do that, because we owe it to the boys and girls, but we owe it to the dedicated staff of everybody that works, not just up here, largest public high school east of Mississippi, but throughout the district. We need to do that, and we will do that. Is there any other comments before I entertain a motion to adjourn? Tony, please. Mr. Rodriguez.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
When I received the call yesterday, I was right down the street at Good Sam. I was, the first word was like, "No, this isn't happening." Being a former student, you know, 4,000-plus, you know, it's basically four high schools on the one roof. I think we need to emphasize on our staff to pay attention to the conversation that these students are having in the hallway, body language. And that's a lot of intel that could be passed over to our school division with the police. And for those that, you know, think that, you know, school police is a bad thing, this is a prime example of why we should have an increase with that division across the city. You know, just being a parent, and my daughter sending me a text message, I'm like, how do I, what do I tell her, you know, to keep her calm? Because she's like, "There's a lot of police at the school. What's going on?" You know, I just said, "Somebody was found with something they shouldn't have. Everything's under control. They're just trying to get dismissal ready. So, you're all set." As a parent, no parent should be able to, you know, say, you know, let their daughter or child know, "This is what's going on." And, you know, these kids are supposed to be in a safe environment. And, you know, being a former Brockton High graduate, it's a very large school. There's a lot of moving parts. There's a lot of cliques. A lot of these young kids in the streets idolize a lot of people that they shouldn't. And I think that needs to be embedded in them, that there's only one place for that, and not in the city.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rodriguez. Any last comments or thoughts or insights at this time? Again, I truly thank each and every one of you for coming here at 9:00 on a Saturday. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, I was just wondering about Tuesday morning. What's gonna happen, Mike? Is it a regular day, or should they come earlier?
No, it's a regular school day. But we'll have, again, extra police will be here.
It'll slow down a little bit.
What's that?
The kids will slow down a little bit?
Well, no, it's a normal, it's a normal arrival. Well, you know, we'll obviously be, it'll be, it'll take a little bit longer for students to get into the building. But traffic should be a lot better, because always when there's more police, people obey the traffic laws a lot more than they do when, you know, when there's not enough office. So, you know, it'd probably be a lot easier to get in, you know, traffic on Tuesday morning. But it's probably, it's gonna be slower for students entering the building, because again, they enter through the identified doors. And, you know, with the wands, it will be, it will be a slower process. But no, we'll have to, we have to keep everything the same time.
Chief Gomes, I was just wondering, on these wands for Tuesday, would they pick up like a fingernail clipper, or a file, yes, metal?
It would depend on what you have, power on that. I don't know, I don't know what the brand that we have.
Dr. Murray, do you have any information? Again, I'm sorry, just because we're taking...
Actually, I have it, because I worked with Danny Vaughn.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Probably three years ago, I think they're Garrett's. I think Garrett is the company that we went with. And Danny is the one that sets, there's different settings on them. Again, they're gonna pick up belt buckles and things like that. But, you know, there are different settings to them. So, but we did purchase several of them. I think Danny and I did that about three, four years ago. So...
I think we should, as a committee, entertain an idea to acquire more of those, of course, for Brockton High, but also for other schools as well, right? And we hope that they can just sit on a shelf and not be used in our elementary or middle schools. But I think we should spend the money. I don't know how much they are. But we should kick the can down the road on Tuesday and talk about that, maybe get a price analysis, and then we can entertain a motion to acquire some of those. Any other questions, Mr. Sullivan?
I just wanted to tell the students to be careful. Don't put piece metal in your pants pocket. It's gonna slow everything down. You gotta get in, gotta get in safe. And we all know what happens with these schools. We can't have that happen here. I'll say it again, I think everybody did a great job. The Brockton Police, the school police, the mayor, the vice chairman, enjoy.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Also, let's give a shout-out to Melinda Campbell. When you do an emergency meeting, there's a lot of work that goes into emergency meeting. And this was done within 12 hours, 20, yeah, 12 hours. So, thank you. So thank you, Melinda, and thank you, BCA, for coming here on a Saturday and taping this as well. Any other comments before we entertain? I will entertain a motion to adjourn, and I truly thank everybody for being here, and we hope everybody comes back 6:00 on Tuesday in the same room, okay? Entertain a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mrs. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Azak. I'll read the roll. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. DiAgostino?
Yes.